So having the hour of four o'clock been reached, we are gonna officially begin our meeting of the Co-County Commission on Social Innovation. This will be our March meeting, so super excited to get us started. So I just want the record to show that we have the following members present in our meeting. Chair Nia, Vice Chair Lane, Commissioner Harry Alston, Commissioner Christie De Laurentis, Commissioner Kristen Freeman, Alder Person Maria Hadden, and Commissioner Howard Mills. I believe we are waiting for a few more folks that will be joining us in person and will make sure to take notice as they come in. Also present, I do want to acknowledge that I do have staff here, Thalia, Olivia, Steph, Steph is here. And then I'm in Meneses and Irene Lopez for the minutes. And we'll begin with public testimony. I'd like to ask Thalia if you can please notify us if there have been any public testimony that has been asked. Just as a reminder for anybody listening to us, public testimony or written comments need to be submitted 24 hours in advance of the meeting to Seventh District. So that's the number seven, th, the word district, dot office, at gmail dot com. And we will make sure to read any written comments or ensure that any of the public that needs to or wants to testify have the information necessary to be able to log into the meeting. Thalia, do we have any public registered speakers or any written comments for the record?
Uh, no, no, no.
I've been informed that we do not have any public written comments or requests to speak to the commission. With that said, I will make sure to, I'm gonna turn it over to our Vice Chair Elaine to introduce to the, our wonderful Professor Patton that will be speaking to us today and having a presentation. I believe most of the members have obtained the email that has the, the, the presentation, the deck. And we do have extra copies here for any of the members that join us in person. So with that, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Lane.
Thank you, Commissioner Nia, and good afternoon, everyone. It's a great pleasure to introduce Professor Desmond Upton Patton, who is a professor of social policy and psychiatry at the University of Pennsylvania. Extraordinarily distinguished career, he earned his MSW at the University of Michigan and his PhD here at the University of Chicago. He will be presenting on community-based data science approaches that can help prevent gun violence. So Professor Patton, thank you for joining us, and the floor is yours. We're eager to hear what you have to say.
Thank you.
Professor Patton, we're trying to get you the co-host. Um, so you're able to share the slide, so just bear with us for a second if you wanted to make any introductory comments.
Sure, thank you so much for having me. I am sad that I'm not in Chicago. I did my training in Chicago, which has informed the work that you're about to hear. So I have great affinity for the city and I'm excited to speak with you all in just a few moments. I guess just let me know when I'm ready to share screen.
Um, I thought I had full host abilities and it wasn't letting me, but um, it looks like you are a co-host now.
Wonderful, let me get started here.
To share your screen.
Okay, let's see. Right? Yes. No, one more second. Okay, can everyone see those slides?
We can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. So again, thank you so much for having me this afternoon. Today, I wanna focus on the broader impact social media has had on gun violence prevention and how I use artificial intelligence, social work thinking, and qualitative methods to do this work. For almost a decade, I have understood and studied social media as a neighborhood, as an environmental context where youth spend an enormous amount of time building community, exchanging ideas, developing and running social movements, and on the other hand, engage in exposed to trauma, harm, grief, and violence expressed in text, video, images, live stream, and the like. Critical to this journey has been an intentional transdisciplinary approach and integration of ideas and theories and methods in order to define and analyze and widely disseminate these findings and challenges surrounding, and the challenges surrounding this new area of study. My work is powered by the Safe Lab, for which I am the founding director. The lab is focused on examining the ways in which youth of color navigate violence on and offline. We draw on computational and social work approaches for research and communication theories. And we engage in qualitative methods and natural language processing methods to understand the mechanisms of violence and how to prevent and intervening in violence that occurs in neighborhoods and social media environments. So the problem of social media as a trigger or amplifier of gun violence is not just a story about how users engage social media platforms. It must also contend with how platforms are designed, how artificial intelligence and other emerging tech tools are deployed to control what you see and the community guidelines that are developed to mitigate harm for some. The problem of social media and gun violence is a transdisciplinary issue that requires an integration not only of methods and theories, but also reimagining who was at the table, what true community collaboration looks like, censoring marginalized voices, ideas, beliefs that go beyond checking boxes and just window dressing. So it requires a 21st century research infrastructure that is, that could support inclusive and equitable dissemination of findings as well. And as a social worker, I believe that social work should be at the front of technology design, development, and the deployment of artificial intelligence for this problem of gun violence. And so in my work, I posit the idea of social work thinking as an apparatus of social change within the context of artificial intelligence design. Social work thinking leverages the National Association of Social Work Code of Ethics. Ideas like honoring the dignity and worth of every person, censoring the importance of human relationships, and engaging in trustworthy practices that anchor how social work thinking can be applied for AI design for gun violence prevention. And so the motivations for this work are twofold for me. One is which I'm sure everyone here is very well aware, gun violence is an epidemic in the United States and has always been particularly acute in cities like Chicago. And at the time of my earliest studies of gun violence in Chicago, the city was experiencing 58% increase in homicides. And at the same time, youth are using social media at an enormous rate. And at the time of my earlier studies, Twitter was a prevalent site for black youth. This has shifted over the last decade or so to towards Instagram and TikTok. But Twitter has become a foundational platform for the study of gun violence. And what we also know is that youth have fully embraced social media and oftentimes the family experts on how to use these platforms that are available to us. Youth stated motivations for using social media are quite similar to traditional forms of communication. They wanna stay in touch with friends, make plans to get to know people better, present oneself, share music, talk about relationships, laugh, have joy, experience all the positivity that we have in our world. But the data from Pew suggests that 90%, 92% of young people spend an enormous amount of time online. 71% of users have more than one social media site. And of those teens, 45% of black teens were using Twitter. So the question that has been situated in my program of research is, what is the role of technology, in particular, social media, in the transmission of violence? So what we've seen over the last decade or so is a merger of complex beefs and taunts within between crews and cliques that are expressed in short, pivi posts and images that lack context, nuance, or any broader explanation. What we see now is what Jeffrey Lane from Rutgers University calls the digital street or what Robin Stevens is now referring to as the digital neighborhood. The digital street is subtly different from the physical street in that it alters how people connect and it restructures daily life by shaping identities, decisions, and behaviors of youth and thus potentially impacting exposure to harm or increased risk for injury. And so it is, I'm gonna take you through a journey in my career. I studied at the University of Chicago and was studying high achieving black boys on the northwest side of the city who were living in one of the most violent neighborhoods in Chicago, but also had four parental GPAs. And one of the things that kept coming up in my interviews with these young people were their ability to navigate safety using social media and that they had this ability to cognitively geocode safe and unsafe locations by how people described activities and engagements and how they conversed with each other on Twitter. So I became really fascinated with this particular strategy. And then a couple of months later, there was a national story about two well-known rappers from the South Side, Chief Keef and Little JoJo. One was in Black Disciples, the other one was in Gangster Disciples, and they were beefing on Twitter. And Little JoJo became fed up with the back and forth on Twitter and he posted his exact location on Twitter. And with three hours, he was murdered in that exact location. So based on what I heard from young people and what I saw in national news between these two rappers, I became really interested in understanding the impact involved with social media was having in this acceleration of violence and this ability to navigate violence. And so I went to the literature like any junior professor would do, and there was no literature on this topic. And so with my classmates from the University of Chicago, we wrote one of the first papers to coin this term internet banging or cyberbanging. That is really just a play on words. And what we wanted to do was put some parameters and some definitions on what we were seeing online. And so we interrogated the computer mediated communications literature, looked at dozens of YouTube videos, and really began to understand the role of how masculinity and how presentation on social media shows up and affects communication, how the role of hip hop and drill music may be layered into how people are communicating and sharing ideas, sharing threats online, and the necessary need to focus on language and the complexity of language and understanding and make a meaning of what's happening online. So after we wrote that paper, we then wanted to engage in empirical work. And what I quickly knew is that in order to do this well, I needed to have a trusted, trusted community partner, and I needed to have better relationships with young people. And so luckily, I was able to connect with Eddie Boca Negro, which I'm sure many of you probably know in the city, who at the time was the co-executive director of the Violence Prevention Program at the YMCA. And what I remember mostly about our first encounter is that he basically interviewed me for two hours. I was sitting in a parking lot at Leonis, and he interviewed me for two hours to make sure that I wasn't going to harm young people, that I wasn't going to be invasive, and that my goals and aims were in line with how he saw how research should be conducted within a community setting. And so I, I guess I had the right answers, and then he allowed me to work with his young people. He helped me to identify up to 40 black and brown young boys and men in Chicago to spend time with, to understand how social media was affecting their life and how they navigate violence. And we also had this opportunity to speak with violence outreach workers, around 20 individuals who were working to affect change across neighborhoods in the city. And so Eddie and I partnered up to conduct the first internet banging qualitative study. This was a study that was sponsored by the University of Michigan, where I was an assistant professor from 2012 to 2015. And we conducted around 34 semi-structured interviews with, with black boys and men, around 17 outreach workers. And our central research question is, what's the role of social media playing in gang violence? And so one of the key learnings that we had was around what violence outreach workers already knew about social media and what they saw as needs and opportunities for how we might use social media as an intervention and prevention tool. So I wanted to share a narrative from one of those outreach workers that really puts a fine point on what and how they understand the impact of social media. And so one of the outreachers says to me in the interview, so when somebody dies, it hasn't happened since leadership found out, but when guys would die, they would make a Facebook page, such and such rocks page, instead of being like Jose Garcia's page. It was, for instance, Speedy Rocks, and then it would be a picture of him, and then, you know, they would draw disrespectful symbols like penises around his mouth and bloodstains all over. And this would fuel more stuff, right? And so the disrespect, the commenting, the posting that is placed on Facebook or any other platform became a triggering effect for how a conversation or argument would move from social media to offline. My life would forever change, however, when I encountered the story and narrative of a daughter of Chicago, Jakira Barnes. We have focused on Jakira Barnes since her death in April of 2014. Jakira was exposed to violence at a very young age and had recurring experiences with death, death and loss, probably more than most of us would ever experience in a lifetime. Just weeks after her first birthday, her father was shot and killed. As she entered her formative teenage years, she joined a gang in the Woodlawn neighborhood of Chicago. The death that seemed to impact Jakira the most was that of her friend Taekwon Tyler. And at 13 years old, this young boy was murdered in their neighborhood. And then she then adopted the Twitter handle at Taekwon Assassin in reference to him. But before Jakira's own brutal untimely death in April, on April 11, 2014, her friend Little B was shot and killed allegedly by the Chicago Police. Now, what made Jakira's story most unique is that, a couple of things. Number one, it's not uncommon for young girls to be in gangs. It wasn't common for a young girl to be deemed the shooter or hitter of a gang. And so Jakira had that title within her gang, the Flyboy Gang on the South Side. She also used social media to communicate every element of her daily life, from joys and happiness to new relationships, to fear, to pain, and also threatening and taunting rival crews and cliques. And so Jakira had this mythology on Twitter that superseded her. She also was a frequent Twitter user. She had around 5,000 followers and around 20,000 plus posts, which at that time placed her in the 95th percentile of Twitter users. But I think this is where things get complicated for me as a researcher, and I wanted to present this as a cautionary tale. So as a black scholar, I had been imbibing narratives, white toxic and white supremacist narratives about young black children, in particular, young black girls, that affected how I saw Jakira, how I understood her, and how I would analyze her tweets. And so one of the biggest news heading was from the Chicago Sun-Times that called her the gun-toting gang girl of Chicago. And never once was there's a, was there's a conversation or an excerpt or a narrative that, that really showed the fullness of who Jakira was. And as an early researcher, I wasn't looking for it, and so I missed it. And so instead of looking for tweets for posts that would show me Jakira, I looked for posts that proved that Jakira was bad, that she was a murderer, and that she was that gun-toting black girl. And so I found them. Posts like burning down the gun line, you cross, so you ended up, you end up on the headlines. This is, you know, has the rhythm of a drill music lyric, but also is an invisible boundary that's important to understand when thinking about gang violence prevention. Anyone can get these hands in this life, we see the ops, fuck them, we're gonna smoke them. These are the kind of posts that were readily apparent because those are the kind of posts that I was looking for. I had been trained and framed Jakira within a particular narrative. But what this young black girl did for me in death was that she forced me to reckon with her humanity. She forced me to see her as a full person, as a full human being who feels and loves just like all of us. And so when she did that, and I kept combing through and going through more data, I saw grief, I saw pain. Oh, foreign M, the ops kill my bro, bro, broken heart. The one line that continues to haunt me is, my struggle ain't never been told. Right? How many times have a, have a young person tried to communicate to us about the hardships of life, but it's never understood or communicated to its fullest extent? But as you might imagine, as you look at some of these lyrics, you might be asking yourself, I don't know what this young person is saying. I don't know what this word means, I don't know what these emojis mean, like, how do you make sense of this? How do you decode this? Well, I had the exact same reaction, and it was a big embarrassing moment for me as someone that was hanging out in Chicago, thought they were hip, thought they understood what young people were saying online, and I absolutely did not. But it was also a humbling moment to understand where my expertise ended and where their expertise began. And so a part of what we needed to do was create a methodology for centering interpretation and context and nuance and centering the voices of young black folk so that we can get to, to meaning, to be able to actually do something with this data. And so we created the contextual analysis of social media approach, and we call it CASM. And through CASM, we provide a methodological process to contextually look for domain-specific labels on social media for the training of artificial intelligence or algorithmic systems. CASM approach serves as a method to bridge the identified gaps between inadequacies in current language processing tools and differences in geographic, cultural, and age-related variants of social media. And this is a team-based approach in which we hire young people as domain experts. We pay them like we will pay graduate students, so we hired young people from the South Side, from, from Jakira's neighborhood to be consultants, to be research assistants, to help us to understand the language. Because oftentimes, usually the language is so hyper-local, that if you're not from that block, that neighborhood, you will miss it. No matter where you're from, if you don't understand what that street means in the context of the neighborhood, you might miss the intended meaning. And so in this particular post, Jay Smoak thinking about deep money, it became really helpful to speak with young people to understand that this particular post is talking about grief, someone has died. But also, there, someone is being disrespected. So the use of weed in naming that weed is a way of disrespecting someone that has been murdered, right? And so this post is telling us that there are at least three different things that are happening. Someone is grieving, someone is being disrespected, and that they are smoking a substance in order to process or to make fun of this death as well. Again, as I said, critical to this process has been working with young people. And so one of the things that has been critically important to this work, we cannot do this work without partnering with community-based organizations and folks like Eddie Boca Negro in order to find domain experts. But we also needed to find mentors to support us along the journey. Another kind of eye-opening learning point for me was to understand that I may have this goal of bringing on young people and paying them well, but our goals may not be lined up. And these, a number of the young people had life happen, and they couldn't always work with us in a way that we hoped to. But once we introduced mentors into our research process to support the young people when things would happen, our relationship and our communication, and hopefully their development and training increased over time. And so we hired young people, and then we also wanted to develop a system to capture this data and to then be in a natural setting where we can analyze and interpret social media posts and to really wrestle with context and meaning, and to really put our biases on the table. One of the assumptions that we make as a lab is that we all have bias, regardless of socioeconomic class and race and gender, and that we need to put those biases on the table and wrestle with them and interrogate them as we're looking at social media posts. And so we created VETAS, which is an annotation system or labeling system, where we take social media data, plop it into the system, and then work with our domain experts and also master social work students who are training in social work to look at data as well. So I'm gonna run you through a quick demo of how this works. We're gonna work with this post, I've been up for like three days straight. So one of our annotators, this is an MSW student, this person has some experience with youth. They've worked in big cities, they've worked in violence prevention, so you have a context for who they are. And so we first wanna get a baseline interpretation, what do you think is happening in a social media post with no context? And so they go look at the post, I've been up for three days straight, and the annotator says he hasn't slept in days. Not helpful, not a lot of context, doesn't get us anywhere. But CASM, our process that I told you that we needed to develop, asked the annotator to go through at least seven mechanisms for looking at context. Go back to the original social media post, utilize web-based resources, go back to the post, the author of the post, look at the peer network, someone may claim to be gang involved, but be following Disney characters, so trying to understand the discontinuity there. Looking at offline events and how events that happen in the neighborhood, in the city, in the, in the country affect how people talk about those things online, looking at the virality of a post and who's engaging with that post. So we asked the annotators to go through all of those layers of context and then go back to that post. Well, now they have a lot more to say. This user's saying that he's been up for like three days straight, most likely meaning he hasn't slept in three days. This post comes days after his friend was killed. This user maybe have been difficulty sleeping because of his friend's death. So now we know that someone may have been killed. And that it humanizes why this person isn't sleeping. So now the sleeping isn't just a thing that's happening nowhere, now we have some context for understanding why this person may be having trouble sleeping, and why this person may be articulating this type of experience on social media. So this is the kind of contextual activities that we engage in to then label data. So in partnership with computer scientists, we wanna create a set of labels on social media posts that can then go to train an algorithm to automatically find those posts without the human, humans involvement. So we're training the algorithm to think like us contextually, so we can automatically find it without our help. The hardest part of being a social worker, partnering with computer scientists, is this need to put everything in these neat binary classifications. And so we did it, but, but lots of struggle. So our two labels that are found most predominantly in the data were grief and aggression. And then everything else, all the other really important things were grouped as other. So these are the labels that then handed off to our computer science colleagues for analysis. But before we hand those labels off, we go back to those young people, again, understanding where our expertise ends and where theirs begin. And we wanna see, do you agree with our labels? Do you agree with how we're seeing the world? Are we missing anything? And then we study those disagreements, because there was oftentimes a disagreement in how we were labeling something, because the young people would have backstories, they would get place and context, they would perhaps know someone in that post or get hand gestures and clothing, all those things as well. And so we really wanted to, to make sure that we check back in with those young people valuing their expertise before we apply a final label, and we would take their understanding of a label over our own. So we wanted to test this, right? We wanted to see, does this work? Does having human intelligence and context make for a better algorithm? And what we learned is that when we have humans in the loop, when we have human intelligence at play, our algorithm is able to find those labels of aggression and grief correctly in the social media data set correctly 64% of the time. That's your macro F1. So human intelligence does help improve accuracy. Now, is this accurate? We're far from 100 still, but when the data is unlabeled without human intelligence, the, the, the algorithm's ability to find those concepts in the social media data can only find it correctly 52% of the time. And so context matters, accuracy is still on the table. One of the questions that we are constantly asking ourselves as a practice of reflexivity is, what does it mean to be accurate in this context of gun violence? What does it mean to have an, an algorithmic system that can accurately interpret African-American English and the experiences of black youth? Is that helpful or harmful? And that's the question that we're And that's the question that we're constantly wrestling with, and I don't have a full answer to yet. And we'd love to get your thoughts and feedback around that. But it raises questions. It raises ethical questions. So this is why having these types of processes has been really important in our work. And so again, we're handing this off to our data science colleagues. These are my, my, my friends from Columbia. I just left Columbia to join the faculty at Penn just last past year. It's Kathy McKeown, expert of tech summarization. Um, and, and the dean of the engineering school, uh, Shi Fu Chang, who was an expert in computer vision. And we have been working together for the last seven years. And so in this work using artificial intelligence, we want to predict labels of aggression laws and other. We want to use as much unlabeled data as possible, and we want to use context. And so in our initial experiment, we first, this has never been done before. So when we started, this, this type of work had never been done before. So what we wanted to do was start small. So this isn't a big data approach. This is a thick data approach. Let's use a small amount of data and see if these algorithmic tools are helpful or not. So we start off with around eight hundred tweet, eight hundred tweets. We want to see if um, algorithm, uh, if these algorithmic systems can correctly predict these labels. And what we learned in this process, and you can find more, uh, about this in this paper, Automatically Processing Tweets, is that number one, the algorithms consistently fail. They cannot understand African-American English. They could not graph what context. One of the awkward and most, the most weird conversations I ever had to have was explaining to my computer science colleagues around the use of the N-word because the systems kept identifying the N-word as being an aggressive term. So I had to have the uncomfortable conversation around the use of the N-word is not necessarily a negative term within the black community. And so, but that type of translation work was critically important for the algorithm because think about it in a different context. Think about how that may show up within a policing context, a law enforcement context, right? Which would not have that layered and contextual opportunity. And so this becomes a feature of how we process and do our work together. Then experiment two, add more data, right? Get more data, more unlabeled data, and then let's also look more extensively within Jakira's network. So if we start with Jakira, we then look at her friends, the people that she has the most mentions and replies with, and we pull their Twitter data as well, which then um, allows us to get almost three hundred users and around a million posts, right? What we learned is that when we integrate more context and have more data and use more humans in the loop, our accuracy increases. And so in that first experiment, we were hitting at around sixty-two percent accuracy. When we added more data and more context, uh, we get closer to seventy percent again, but always thinking about, wow, but does it mean to close to a hundred? Is this good? This is harmful? Is this helpful? Is this bad? Don't know. And then we wanted to add in images. And so we gathered around two thousand tweets within that larger data set that were connected to Jakira and her friends that also had an accompanying image with it as well. We wanted to see, um, does having an image help us to be more accurate? He- here are some examples of the types of things that we would readily see in the data set. These are not from the data set. These are Google stock images. We don't want to bring in the images from the social media data for ethical purposes. But here's the type of thing that we were, um, able to predict. And what we learned is that computer vision was really good at helping us to identify aggressive labels because things like a gun could be um, it's, it's easier for the algorithm to pick up. But then it's also thinking or considering the context around the gun, who's holding the gun and how you're holding it. And all those particular layers are important to be aggregated from this, from the use of the algorithm. We also learned that, um, using both text or NOP and computer vision was better at identifying grief because of the words that are used and that, um, uh, both were equally as helpful for identifying substance use as well. So many of you might be sitting around thinking like, is this ethical? Is this big brother? Like, what are you doing? Is this surveillance? Is this, you know, what are we doing here? Are we targeting black kids? Is this actually helpful? And so this work really sits within these two really important ethical, um, considerations. Number one, we spend a lot of time talking to black families and black parents in Chicago, where we heard over and over and over again, it's that black families want their kids to be safe and desire any tool possible that would help achieve these ends. And then as a social work scientist and a, and a social scientist, I also know that digital surveillance and policing enacts and enhances yet another form of state violence on black people and communities of color, right? And so needing to constantly be toggling between these two ethical issues. And so one of the things that, you know, I think we need to con- to consider in terms of our methodologies or practices, but especially with using CASM, is to understand the social context in which we're applying these tools, questioning how we identify and determine what success means. And if extraction of context when using NOP is actually going to be helpful in our analysis process, is going to help us validate our findings. What's the goal? Why are we doing this? How are we doing this? What's the purpose? We've always wanted to develop platforms with communities in Chicago for real-time social media updates. And so your violence interruption person, you are working in on, you know, working in Woodline. And there's an argument that's happening on TikTok. You don't know the argument, the argument is happening on TikTok because you're not on TikTok yet, or you can't manage the millions of posts that are coming through TikTok, but you know the neighborhood, you know the community, you know the folks in the neighborhood. What if we can mitigate that gap by providing you with, um, real-time updates of language that may be bubbling up, not individuals, but labeling and precise locations of where co- content, uh, might be bubbling up so that you have that additional data point when how, when deciding how are you going to intervene, when are you going to intervene, so forth and so on. But it's not that easy. You keep running into roadblocks, right? One of the issues that I deal with in some of my, uh, theoretical work that I'm developing a conceptual framework to theorize how in an era of big data and criminal justice practice, social media policing may adversely affect communities of color. For example, I critique how race affects social media policing through the juxtaposition of social media use during the twenty fourteen arrest of black youth in New York City on the left who were hyper surveilled for months and were captured and interviewed and arrested before they even committed a crime because they were in the same Facebook pictures with folks who may have been associated with gang or may have been associated with criminal activity versus and compared to the social media margin, in the case of Dylan Ruff, the, the, the murderer, the Charleston church shooting in twenty thirteen that killed nine black people um, in South Carolina. And the other individual who, 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 um, was a part of the shooting in Pittsburgh, they had these racist manifestos that were posted on social media platforms, but we didn't find those racist manifestos until after the fact, right? So the disparate use of surveillance and strategy is a part of the problem. Hence why we need to take a, we had, we had to take a moment and pause before deploying these tools because we need to make sure that we have the right ethical guidelines and frameworks in place. And we need to consider what our non-negotiables are in, in, in this product design and, and how we develop these types of products. So I just want to leave you with a couple of things that I, that I hope you can kind of think with, think about. Number one, I, I think social media should be understood as a community. It's a neighborhood. It's not this thing over here. It is life. And there's a place where people live that isn't necessarily distinct from the offline world. I know there's a lot of talk about performance, but I think you might also consider performance as an aspirational self. So what, what, how many we think about those performative elements as an artifact or a piece of, of, of who we want to be or how we show up in the world? I think social media can be a powerful tool for understanding and preventing root causes of violence. I think AI offers an opportunity to augment and to bolster violence prevention. And I think it's most useful in understanding root causes of violence. I do not think that AI should be used to predict violence. I do not think that AI should be used to surveil black communities. I think it can help us to understand what people are talking about, how they're affected, uh, who they're associated with in ways that can help us to, to, to hopefully develop better questions of how we may analyze and identify problems. I think however, social media and AI are not the sole answers to violence prevention and when not used thoughtfully and correctly can be a tool for surveillance and mass incarceration. I think it's important to always be working to uncover and recognize in person institutional bias in this application of AI for gun violence prevention and to consider its utility. But this work should never be done alone. It is hyper-important to do this, to have critical and diverse perspectives and voices when we're considering if and how we might use data science for gun violence prevention. We're gonna quickly run through a couple of other things that may give you some new insights of how this work has been, how we shifted in our work based on what we've learned from Jakira and some of the mistakes that we've made. Uh, we have partnered with the city of New York, uh, with the, um, New York City's mayor's office to use this as a well-being application. And what this allows us to do is to compare what we learn on social media to qualitative interviews and to understand the linkages between things like housing and violence, right? Uh, and so this has become a, an important way of using social media to validate the things that we see in the neighborhood through interviews and survey-based work as well. What we've learned from young people is that joy cannot be left out of this equation and that many young people were already using joy as an intervention for well-being and for living in a thriving world, but also as a way to quell a particularly aggressive moment that may be perpetrating on a social media platform. So now with a gift from Microsoft, we are not going to be studying joy. We have, uh, a youth advisory council with young people from Philly and New York to first, uh, define joy, to understand concepts of joy, and then to use artificial intelligence to find this concept across social media platforms. Um, and then we want to help people connect around joy as a way of intervening in violence that may be happening across communities. And then we also just want to be talking to folks that might be using social media as a tool for violence prevention. And so we created this, um, uh, platform, uh, called IESO that helps us to understand and to identify signs of digital stress online as well. Um, and so this is an ongoing, um, um, study in New York City. We're in year two of this process. Um, I'm writing a book about Jakira and about Chicago and digital loss. And I had an opportunity to spend some time with Jakira's mom and just learn a lot about her. One of the things that was really important for me in this work is to get her approval for studying Jakira. And she was really helpful and also gave me her approval uh, to do this work. And one of the things that she said with me that has, that sticks with me is this quote. Uh, I was hurt and in pain. Uh, I was a million things, but I was numb to the fact because this happened so many times previously. Think about the histories of violence in Chicago. What do I do now? What do I do? Do I do what other parents do? They don't want to talk about it. We're just waiting on the next kid to die. I never got a chance to really grieve because I had to jump back into life going on. I just vowed to her on her deathbed. I wouldn't let her name go in vain. So as a mother, as a young black female from the same streets of Chicago where my daughter was killed, I know what she went through. And so this, I hope that this book um, helps to further, uh, Chantel Brown's work and her mission to keep her daughter's name alive. Thank you so much.
Oh, Dr. Patton, thank you very much. A very enlightening presentation. Uh, we'll invite questions or comments from the commissioners. Uh, not seeing any here, uh, online. Anyone's hand up?
Um, I do see Commissioner Austin.
Yeah, Commissioner Austin, I, I was hoping you would weigh in on this, and I'm eager to hear your question or line of inquiry.
Well, first of all, thank everyone for joining us today. And thank you, Dr. Patton, for accepting my invitation to begin this conversation. I appreciate that. I, I wanted to go back to something you and I had talked about. You spoke about it perhaps a little more sophisticated today, and, and that is the concept of social media as community and also the focus on achieving community health and well-being as opposed to trying to predict violence and, and bad actors. So you talked a little bit about that at the, at the end of your presentation. I would like to hear uh, some more of your thoughts as we begin to look at this work and think about some of the, the root causes, but also at the same time trying to find some more immediate solutions that we can, uh, raise up to the county for consideration. So whatever reaction you might have to that question, I'm, I open the floor, not only to you, but others, others here.
I think my, my research and my outlook in this space fundamentally changed when I saw social media as a neighborhood. And what that meant for me is that I now saw folks as embedded in a world that is full of the complexities and opportunities that we have in the physical world. And that we can look towards the features of speech and language and image and video as clues, as context, as understanding for understanding what people are going through. And it gives you a really diverse view of the connections between economics and school and health and mental health in ways that are really hard to get at in surveys and traditional research methodologies. And so what I've appreciated is that it allows me to see an individual nested within a network, nested within a city, nested, nested within a neighborhood. And then to see how that relationship unfolds within and between other people to see, to, uh, see how dynamics unfold, to also see how people love and like and live. And I think that all of those elements are just really important to think, thinking about the health, not just of the physical community, but understanding that the health of the physical community is directly tied to the health of a digital community. Now, that's not necessarily the your sole responsibility because there are platforms that also need to be held accountable in their space. But I think there's an important connection that needs to be made.
Commissioner Mills.
Is that for me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, Dr. Patton, very grateful for this presentation. It's extremely, uh, rich, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions about your research, the team, and, and how you gain access to some of these data points. The most specific question I had is, it's very language-based. And I wonder about TikTok because, uh, not because I'm a Hyundai owner, but when I saw the Hyundai TikTok, my reaction was to notify Hyundai that they may have a problem on their hands. Others saw, uh, video and interpreted what that video could teach. And it isn't good. And for those are, are my fellow commissioners, it's how to steal a Hyundai that uses a steel key, okay? And it's not that difficult to do. But you're looking at a possible predictor in that instance of, uh, there is some audio, but there's also this visual context that's going on. And I'm wondering, um, I, I think I saw on your LinkedIn that you're consult to TikTok. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And i- is there been any kind of reaction on behalf of your team to begin looking at some things that are not necessarily all verbal and not confusing the AI as much, but rather, in fact, researchers that came out of, of, uh, University of Pennsylvania, one who teaches at the University of Chicago now, Susan Goldenmeadow, her whole research is on non-verbal communication and what, what signs mean, okay? Both in the, the hearing and the non-hearing world. So my question is, what's going on first with respect to the, um, non, uh, you know, the, the not written word, but rather the, the kind of visual symbols?
Yeah, so we, we have, we have deployed computer vision techniques in our own work. We haven't done it with TikTok, uh, but it has been useful to do a couple of things. And one, again, reaching back out to those domain experts to draw bounding boxes around images so that we could then have conversations around how we might process and contextualize those images and videos. Again, these are tools that can be used across systems and communities at any point. The challenge is the interpretive lens, right? So one could see a video around someone stealing a Hyundai. And if they see a white boy doing that, a white child doing that, that image in that experience could be interpreted one way. But if that individual were a young black girl or a black boy, that image could be interpreted very differently. And it also has impact on how things are reported on social media platforms as well. These reporting mechanisms are, the evidence around them is not super helpful. We don't know if they're actually helpful features or not, but we do know that when that experience is racialized, then the, the reporting ticks up. We get more reporting when there is some type of feature that just suggests that that person is of a different race. And so, um, I think there, I think we need to, we need more research in this space. Um, TikTok is very much concerned about the, we are having conversations about these issues. It is certainly at the forefront uh, uh, of folks' minds, um, um, especially within the responsible innovation AI teams. And so folks are aware, they're, they're thinking about it, um, but there's more work to be done.
Thank you so much. I, I just think there's a lot of richness in the non-verbal visual, especially as you mentioned earlier, the gestures, uh, hand signals and what have you that you had in your, in your deck. Thank you.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, Professor.
Is there another?
Commissioner Brutus and then Commissioner.
If you'd be so kind.
Pleasure.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good afternoon. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Patton. Uh, I am enthralled by all of what you just saw and, um, I'm amazed at the complexity and level of detail in your study and your research. And so my question, I I want to point at the affiliation and partnership that you have with New York City. We have over, I think, over a hundred and thirty municipalities in the county. And I and I, from a regional standpoint, you know, while most of the eighteen year old place that you're studying amongst the young black population probably generally are similar. You know, he, each region might have a different gang communication method or have you. And so I'm interested in the costs. Like if we were to replicate this model in each of the cities or the municipalities in the county, like how much would it cost for you to be in every city? Right? And I think what we say to students, every um, you know, the communication methods are different, you know, as you go regionally. And maybe that all the terminology is staying or mean the same. So, you know, a more focused or eventually a more focused than they usually regionally would also be beneficial for us, you know, for those you know, in the space of the
Sure, I I think I heard that the question is related to the cost of our New York City Mayor's Office grant to study well being in the city using AI and qualitative methods. It's a great question. So that particular study was a about a year and a half, two years study. And it cost a little over a half a million dollars to run that study. Those costs were associated with a number of activities. Number one, it is critically important for us to pay our participants and to pay them well for their time and their engagement in this study. And so that was one important cost. We also need, I think, probably the highest cost was paying for engineering and student based help, help for the data science components. So that's going to be your highest cost. And so we hired a data scientist and then also hired a computer science PhD students. And so, you know, a data scientist is quite expensive and we paid for the time of a PhD student, which meant we had to pay for a portion of their education as well as their time on the project. We also paid for any other research assistance time and for the transcription of interview based data and for graduate students and social work and other social programs that would analyze the qualitative data as well. And we've been paid for any principal investigator's time, so my time and then my two colleagues who were of computer science folks as well. And so that, so it was probably a little probably like five fifty was our was our number.
And also, I mean, are you finding that there are variances? You know, between the regions that you guys are looking at, this, for example, here in New York City, but is it different upstate? Or generally speaking, are the young people or this target audience, are they kind of all speaking the same language? And the vernacular that you are finding on social media is relative to the trans.
Yes, yes and no. I think the the thing about social media and the translation of knowledge is that we have some shared knowledge because we are hyper communic- hyper connected now. However, language is also hyper local. So language isn't changing, I think, as fast as people think that it's changing. It is evolved over time, but young people are very much connected to what what language is changing. I think the critical difference is the hyper local event based information understanding, right? So understanding jargon and terms that are local to your neighborhood. So that's why having local domain expertise is a critical element to the work. And so we would have to have New York based youth working on this project, Chicago based youth working in Chicago and vice versa. I've done similar presentations like this in the UK. And I would say that those young people understood about seventy five percent of the context because of the translation of music. They they listened to Chicago Joe music and so it wasn't unfamiliar to them to hear terms that Chicago people were saying. But then when we got to the nitty gritty, got to nuances, then things got a little more challenging.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank you. Oh, actually, before I go, I think Commissioner Slizer has his hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you. I I you you partially answered my my question around the evolution of language and and how quickly it does evolve and how AI would react to that evolution without without ground truthing again. So it it seems like for a temporal period, we're not worried about that. But you know, over maybe a year or two, intent could change, new jargon and and comes up every day. I was wondering how that gets incorporated.
We have to refresh our systems and so we have to have periodic checks probably every three to six months to refresh uh, do a number of things to refresh what's in our database, to extract posts or users that are no longer active, right? So we take people out that are no longer, you know, on Twitter or on a particular social media post. Uh, but also needing to do our own training, right? And so we have to stay current in our understanding and also work very closely with linguists in this space as well to kind of keep keep abreast of new nuances. But honestly, the best folks who understand those changes are young people, right? Because a lot of it is based on the culture and how the culture is shifting, how music is shifting, how technology affects how we speak and use abbreviations as well. And so you can have the most sophisticated linguists in the room and that young person is probably going to have a better understanding of new shifts in language than the linguist.
Thank you. Um, so I had, again, thank you so much for your presentation. I think it is very something that we need to make sure that we're taking into consideration as I know we've spoken a lot in this commission about artificial intelligence and we've had multiple issues, I think. But I always come with the with the legislative lens, given the fact that, you know, that's my that's my role here in Cook County as a as a commission commissioner of the board. And I think something that is a recurring conversation that we're having is in regards to the actual translation of either the nonverbal or the the written versus the interpretation. And I think that that's at the end of it where we where we're getting at, right? I I think that difference is something that I've been making sure that that we advocate for in regards to just language access and ensuring that we continue to say interpretation means everything. You can translate a tweet into, you know, the what you got in your first attempt without the contact, context. And I think in government, a lot of the times we want easy solutions. And we see artificial intelligence as something that will help solve all problems and help us get to where we're we need to be and get us into a place where technology is helping us out. But that has continued to be an issue. And I think my question to you is how do government entities ensure that interpretation is at the forefront of any investment that we do in technology, especially when it has to do with the criminal justice system? I was the chief sponsor in twenty nineteen to dismantling a database that was being used to criminalize black communities and Latino communities. And that is always something that is I'm very skeptical about. But we want, we we have to be at the tables in government and we have to have these conversations. How do we ensure that that's a priority as we move forward in into these technological advances?
I think you first should establish ethical framework instead of guidelines and principles that guide your decision making with how you think about interpretation, the the extent to which you accept interpretation within testimony and within your policy and decision making as well. I think building a resource guide of folks you can consult with. There's a lot of research in this space, folks that are doing amazing work in this area. So you would have that as a way of validating some of the things that may be coming through as well. I think most importantly, you need to have your nonnegotiables. And I think that 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 you develop those nonnegotiables by by considering some of the most more challenging examples. We have lots of examples around AI's deployment, especially within facial recognition in black and Latino communities, and really interrogating those examples and using that to fuel and to inform what your nonnegotiables are within this space. And then have those nonnegotiables to then guide a set of principles that you want to have. And I think, you know, leaning and leaning into the the AI Bill of Rights that came out of the way that came out of the White House a couple of months ago can be a great starting point.
Thank you. The last thing I just, I I think is a really good takeaway. I I like the concept that you've highlighted regarding digital neighborhoods. I think a lot of the times we we paint social media as like this quote unquote fake place where it's people are presenting maybe their best, you know, persona or interpretation of their life. But I think it's very important also to highlight that there's, it is also a place where people are the realist in a lot of instances. And I think really identifying and putting it in that perspective, that it's a digital neighborhood really brings forth the the need and the urgency to ensure that that we're also, you know, holding those social media spaces accountable, but also balancing what you've stated about ensuring that we're not using it just to to harm communities or to over generalize. So I I appreciate you bringing that concept forward and I yield to my.
Thank you. Is are any other questions from the commissioners? I have a few of my own. If I'm the last one speaking here. Again, Professor Patton, thank you for an extraordinary presentation. I I think I have three questions. The first is a very fundamental one. And that is you had cautioned against using the strategy to predict violence. But it clearly is intended to identify aggression or loss. And my question is, isn't identifying aggression or loss a proxy for predicting violence?
Yeah, I I I use my story as a cautionary tale. I use it as a story of we made a mistake and it did not help. I think what we learned from that mistake is that young people were more likely to talk about grief and loss and complex trauma that is really helpful to understand. And we also found that within a two day window, that expressions of grief and loss would translate into aggression because it would be left on platforms and left up to the devices of folks who may not have your best interest at heart. And through disrespect and other means of bullying and taunting will become aggressive over time as you start to interact, right? And so, yes, our goal initially was to predict violence. And we saw that that was the wrong thing to do with AI. Allowed us to do, if we engage in more reflexive practice, is to consider and anticipate those problematic assumptions, to anticipate those challenges of how it was applied in society and to do an about face and to redirect and to ask better questions. And I think that that's hopefully what we're up to right now.
Okay, so I'm assuming what I should infer from that, that in your view, aggression or loss is one of potentially multiple factors that will lead to violence.
I think understanding aggression and loss can help us understand root causes of violence. I think we I think we constantly need to get a better grip on what's causing violence.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that. My 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 second question has to do with your arguing in favor of a platform, a community based platform to scrutinize in real time social media updates. And you talked about New York and I think Philadelphia might have been another example. Two parts here. One, what what lessons might we learn from the way those programs were initiated and managed? And how effective they were? I mean, how how might we think about those as models for us to for us to follow or learn from? And then second, given whatever the response to that question is, where would you see us as a county, in a very large county, starting in this process? I mean, if we were to initiate, for example, a pilot project or demonstration project, what in your view might that look like? And what would it yield in your view?
Great question. So first, we have never deployed any platform because of the ethical dilemma that we understood by engaging in more reflexive practice. I think my journey has been worn of 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 making mistakes and learning from mistakes. I want to underscore that completely because artificial intelligence is, it is, it is the raid. We get so excited about its deployment. And I think I got caught up in that and came to some realizations by by being willing to put my bias on the table, by putting myself in community with other scholars of color that were doing critical work in race and technology that was helpful for me to uncover some of my own challenges. And so we we've never deployed it because there aren't strong enough ethical frameworks and guidelines and principles that can help people who might want to use our tool in a different context that we have no control of. So that is my biggest concern. We can create the most ethical, thoughtful tool in the world. If some law enforcement agency or department or some other actor could use it and use it however they want to use it. If we don't have some type of regulation practice in place. So that's why we haven't gone there. That is our our hope has been to support those organizations. What we've what we've netted out is maybe AI isn't always the best option. There are low tech ways in which we can help people to ask better questions of social media. So can we help an interventionist, an outreach worker, an interrupter, ask better questions of social media that may not have been a part of your repertoire before? And that has proven, we don't have evidence that it's successful, but I'm seeing it more and more and folks are becoming more literate and more versatile in their conversations around social media that I think is a really critical step. What I think is most important and where I think people should be spending their energy is in education. We have droves and droves of young people that are digital natives. They have no understanding what it means to be a digital citizen, right? They have more understanding around the practice of social media, right? The features and characteristics of social media, how to use social media, but don't understand what it means to be a user of that neighborhood, a user of that world. When you're in seventh, eighth grade, you take classes from what it means to be a citizen of the United States. But we have not understood social media as being a world in which you are a citizen of. And so there's so so much happening and happening so fast that we cannot catch up. The young people can't catch up, the practitioners can't catch up, the adults can't catch up. And there's a need to really invest in training for those folks that are on the ground because they get what's happening. But it's too much. Social media is all encompassing, overwhelming, robust amount of data. What can we do? What can be the smallest level of training? It can't just be a one hour training that you offer once a year. What can be an ongoing practice, right? That we can work in this space. And I think one of the solutions is to think about this as a workforce development strategy. Those domain experts could now get a job at Spotify as a data curator. This is exactly what they're doing and that person could then leave, leave Woodlawn, go through a training on data curation through my research lab, through other labs that are across the country. It could easily get a job as a data curator because they've been doing that work, right? So I think that there's an opportunity to think about how do we translate lived experience. Young people who are interested in chill music and hip hop and other forms of music can use that as a tool for getting into technology jobs and opportunities. You can use that lived experience as expertise for that. So I think we need to build, we need to have digital literacy as a universal principle. We have more trainings for folks who have boots on the ground. And we need to consider the workforce development opportunities that are embedded in using technology for transformational for transformational justice.
And I would argue also, just if I could interrupt for a second, Mark, the digital proficiency digital proficiency, which you said literacy, but I think, you know, I prefer to look at it the proficiency level of some of these individuals who you basically put in front of us and what I know goes on is way above where I'm at. And they are part of the tech education, tech talent that is sitting all around us in our county untapped for those careers. I'm not talking about jobs untapped for the very tech jobs you're talking about, Professor. I agree with you. It's workforce development. And we do have an organization I work with called the Discovery Partners Institute, which is part of the University of Illinois system that's tapping into the neighborhoods and taking talent that can do that kind of sophisticated communication with each other and use it to code and do things without having to go to a four-year college. So I'm sorry, Mark, I just had a.
I just I just want to I just want to add to that quickly. I think coding is a is an important element, but it's not just coding. It's also product development, it's AI ethics, it's advocacy and technology. There are lots of roles.
The arts.
Some like the arts. Exactly. So I think that there's a lot of opportunities in technology, 100%.
Okay, so let me let me take another run at this. You had indicated that this work is not to be done alone. So let me interpret that, however you intended it, as an offer. How would you? How would you see yourself as adding value to the commission's work, given the commission's mandates to incubate actionable social policy recommendations for the county? And to serve as a convener, a collaborator, a catalyst? Is it around workforce developments? Is it around? Well, I'll leave it to you. And I I miss the 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 assumption underlying the question is that you might be willing to help us in our work. And I'm only saying that because in our earlier conversation, I asked you that very question and you enthusiastically responded in the affirmative. So I'll assume that hasn't changed in the interim. But again, coming back to my earlier question, you know, where might we start? And I'll leave this open as to which specific area you think we might add greatest value, that is what is likely to be most efficacious from a public policy point of view.
So I think there's a lot of answers to that. I would, you know, underscore the things I've already said in terms of digital literacy and the need for workforce support. One of the potential collaborations, I have created a new center at Penn called the Center for Inclusive Innovation and Technology, where our goal is to disrupt who gives to be a technologist and how we bring in more inclusive, diverse and equitable thought into the development of urban technologies. And to use that as a way of training and supporting particularly folks of color that want to be involved in the space. So I think that doing brainstorming, designing work in that space is really helpful. So I'm happy to be a thought partner and a collaborator through my center's work. But I think honestly, the easiest, the lowest hanging fruit is to convene stakeholders and to have conversations about needs, opportunities and resources and awareness and to use that as the foundational tool, but if you will, to then think about what your next steps are. I think oftentimes we jump too quickly to solutions without understanding the problem. And so I think really getting close to our understanding of the proper definition by convening stakeholder interviews with folks that are doing workforce development, violence prevention, mental health, you know, education, all those folks seem to be at the table to really get to what could come out of that and use that to then and then bring in a designer to help design a set of opportunities for that work. And my lab, we do things like that. And so if we can be of support, let me know.
That would that would be wonderful. And I think the the very last thing you said really resonates with me. A lot of the things you said resonate with me, but I'm particularly impressed by this notion of a of an interdisciplinary or cross disciplinary approach where workforce development and violence prevention and other societal aims might be approached holistically and collectively. And I think that's I think that's a really interesting and persuasive and useful approach for us to consider as the commission moves forward. And I'm deeply grateful for your pointing that out.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any other questions before? I think we've we've taken almost unfair advantage of the professor's good nature here today. I say almost. Any further questions? If not, Professor Patton, we're going to continue on with the commission meeting. You are more than welcome to stick around and join us. We're we very much appreciate your contributions. If you have other things to do, we understand that as well. But please know that we will certainly want to take you up on your generous offer to continue to collaborate with us. And we are we are very appreciative of everything you've done and everything you will do for us. So thanks again, and thanks for spending the time with us today.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Thanks for the invite.
Thank you so much.
Great. So we will continue with our agenda. The next item on our agenda was updates by the Chair and Vice Chair. So just on my end, I'll just reiterate what we what I announced at the last meeting. So affidavits and the reappointments have been submitted for those of you that have submitted the signed affidavits, the bios, and I believe your CV. This is just again, just as a reminder, procedural, given the fact that the Social Innovation Ordinance states that each term we must reappoint. So we're just going through that process right now. I believe we've submitted a handful of folks already that will be heard before the board meeting next week. So if you have not submitted your signed affidavit and the the two other items that I've just mentioned, please reach out as soon as possible to my staff. You can email Talia. I know that she sent out that information. So it's extremely, again, important so that you, again, can be official in the commission. The other thing I want to just make sure that I reiterate, I just want to urge everyone because we are still under the governor's order, emergency order, we are still doing hybrid, but we will begin to do all in person. It's extremely important to have all members attend in person, given the fact that we need to make sure that we're approving the minutes and that we're going through the 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 right OMA procedures. We've tried to follow those as much as possible, which is why today we were unable to approve the minutes from the last meeting. And then the last thing on my end, well, two other things, the 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 most important one is I will be submitting the annual report to the board. I I'm going to be emailing you all a version. You have a printed one in in front of you. If there are any additional areas that have not been captured. We still have final edits that that are being worked on, but we needed to make sure that at least the the general concepts that we've discussed have been captured. Not all of the presentations are on here. Most of them are, there have been a few that have been combined combined. For example, like the criminal justice one, they didn't have, you know, separate areas, some of the same focus and the same goals and recommendations applied to both. So we have combined it to just make sure that we're condensing. So just wanted to make that announcement. We we hope to submit at next week's board meeting and have a hearing that will just kind of talk a little bit about the just summarize at next month's meeting. So we just want to make sure that everything that we discussed and have worked on, that we capture it correctly. Yes, Commissioner Brutus, you have a question?
Yeah, I I want to make sure that Talia records me as president.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we didn't, if we weren't able to pass the minutes at the beginning of the meeting. I know that it would be out of order on the agenda, but do we inform now to pass the?
So quorum needs to be met in person. So we do have a quorum by virtual participation. But according to Alma, we're we're unable to do so because we need in-person participation. And I do want to just record, yes, Commissioner Brutus is here. Commissioner Cooley is here in person. I believe the other folks that joined us virtually were Commissioner Ciento, Bureau Chief Flores is here in person, and Commissioner Slizer is also joining us virtually. Yeah, Commissioner Flores, yes. Am I missing anyone that I didn't call? I think I called on everyone. Okay, great. And then I know we are still working on the the presentations that we're going to be doing in the different parts of Cook County. We're lining up a few. Given the fact that some of our state legislature members have been in Springfield, they had agreed to host us and and also ensure obviously the partnership with the Social Enterprise Chicago to ensure that we're doing different trainings and workshops throughout the county. But again, because folks have been in Springfield, it has delayed it a little bit, but we're very close to securing a few dates. And we'll make sure to get the schedule out to all members. Hopefully you can join us and help amplify the reach by sharing to anybody that you feel that would benefit from from those. And we can provide again additional background and information as we continue to simplify those. And I will turn it over to Vice Chairman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Let me pick up where you left off, if I may, just to provide a more granular context for these capacity building workshops. The intent here is to have a series of meetings where talent from the Board of Social Enterprise Chicago would present to nonprofit leaders opportunities that they may explore internally to generate earned revenue, thereby become more financially sustainable. And it involves not only looking at the organization's core competencies and utilized assets, but models of social enterprise approaches to governance, approaches to access to capital. And the intent here and collaboration between the Commission and Social Enterprise Chicago is to flex our muscle as broadly and deeply as we can to ensure that the social sector is as socially impactful as possible. And the first step there is to get them to understand what opportunities are available to them, to become increasingly self-reliant. So to the extent any of you have an interest in having such a session in your locality, these are typically going to be hosted in concert with a local policymaker. And we want to have a broad turnout by the nonprofit community in that locale. We'd love to hear from you. So that's that. The second point I would want to make since we mentioned Social Enterprise Chicago is one week from today, next Thursday, the 16th at five o'clock in the evening, Social Enterprise Chicago will be hosting a fireside chat where I will be sitting down and talking about social impact issues with Michael Strickman, who did testify before the commission. He, as you'll recall, is the Executive Vice President of the Obama Foundation. The event will be at Roseville University, Michigan Avenue. It will include not only the fireside chats, but significant opportunities for networking and collegiality. There will be an open bar if all the other stuff wasn't important enough for you. And heavy appetizers still included. So if you're interested, we'd love to have you there and we'd love to have you spread the word. If you want to get to particular, shoot me an email or on my social media platforms, you'll you'll see the invitations. So we'd love to have you there. The final thing I wanted to mention is that Professor Robert Vargas, who testified last month, who, as you'll recall, is a sociologist and a data artist, and I've now learned what a data artist is. I didn't know it at the time. He has very graciously volunteered to serve as a consultant to the commission with respect to any or all of the working groups where he might add value. And he is initially going to be working with Commissioner Austin's working group, seeking to look at, again, violence reduction, but more broadly looking at community wellness, community well-being, so as to expand the positive externalities as violence is reduced in communities. So he would be with us this evening, however, he happens to be overseas. And he will likely attend future meetings. And to the extent any of the commissioners would like to tap into Professor Vargas's expertise as to the projects initiatives in which you might be interested. He has generously made himself available for that purpose, and we're grateful to him. So that's the end of my updates, but I, Madam Chair, would like to suggest that we have reports, at least from a couple of our working groups. We may have more than that, but I I'm aware of at least two. So with your permission, let's start with those. So if I may, Commissioner Austin, and thank you, by the way, for introducing Professor Patton to the commission. Without your involvement, we would have known about him and his important work. So thanks for that. But we would love to hear whatever report you might want to offer from the perspective of public safety and the broadening agenda and wheelhouse of the work in which you and others are engaged. So Commissioner Austin, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First, I want to just dovetail on the piece you offered up about Professor Vargas. And one of the things we are also looking at is looking at some of the advanced graduate students and PhD students that are kind of under his tutelage for internship opportunities. So there is an interest on that as well and ways that they might be working with the commission and the various working groups. And then also at the last meeting, we indicated that we presented our our framework for the working group, a values-based framework and several key initiatives we thought we would advance. One of the early ones was we've had some conversations now with the Cook County Health Foundation, and we're looking at setting up a a tour of the hospital and and trauma center. We run up against some conflicts in terms of their scheduling, but we want to try to advance that in April or by the end of April as as we can. And those that are interested in participating, we're certainly welcome to have you join us and look for ways that we can use that as a entree to creating some pilot projects around violence reduction, public health and well-being. So that's the two points that I would bring forward today.
Very much appreciate that. And I think the initiative that you are spearheading here is extraordinarily important because the idea here is to find ways in which the trauma center might serve as a demonstration site to provide wraparound services to be identified for victims of violent crime that come into the hospital along with families or others. So that when they get back out into the community, they become emissaries of public health and advocacy and best practices in terms of interacting with forces that may not always be for good. And the hospital, I think, could, if this plays out as I hope it will, and I candidly expect it will, would serve as a model that might be scaled up and rolled out throughout hospitals all over the county. So I think this could be a really important initiative. The University of Chicago is doing something similar already. And though I spoke with the head of their trauma center this morning, and they too will be engaged in this effort for us, and they actually have some empirical data to support how what they've been doing with wraparound services has positively impacted their experiences beyond just medical relief and remediation, but actually looking at community health and well-being and taking advantage of the opportunity when you have a gunshot victim, for example, within your four walls, and he or she then leaves those four walls. What what message do you want them to convey? And how well positioned will they be to convey that message? So they become a force for good if we do it right. So it's a really important piece of the puzzle here. So thanks. Thanks to Harry. And then the other one. And then the other, one other working group that I know will have. A report is what we are continuing to call the Industrial Policy Working Group, although it seems to have taken on also a broader mission and. Commissioner Cooley, I believe that you have graciously volunteered to present a report on behalf of that working group. If you'd be so kind, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. Thanks for having us today. So we are also looking at the name of community owned assets to be a little more literal in what we're intending from the work. So still focusing on crafting a more. Precise definition of the goals and outcomes from the group. And what we'd be intending to achieve from the possible aims. We're really still looking at public ownership of assets within communities. Where it's usually privately provided good or service, such as grocery stores, banking, childcare. Pharmacies and really looking at what would it look like for the county to make investments and having that ownership and then either privately managing. Or working collaboratively with community partners to do that. A natural invitation of the project. We're really seeing this as an opportunity. If the county is engaged in the ownership of the physical structure and maintaining the long-term. Asset that is required for community health and seeing the connections back to. Wellness, but also public safety. Work, workforce development. So really excited for the developments there. And so hopefully, actually been trying to. Reach out and schedule time for Commissioner Flores and Commissioner and I as well for furthering the conversation.
And Commissioner Mayles as well.
And Commissioner Manz, and seeing where we can sit within the structure. The county governments, if we can make a clear recognition, who would be.
Yes, thank you. And the idea here, of course, is to fill market gaps where services are not being made available. To residents of disinvested communities and have the government step in and fill that market gap. In areas where the county already has expertise, knowledge, experience. And so, you know, this is, I think, a very interesting idea. The. County has not had an industrial policy. Here we're talking about broadening it beyond industrial to include. All sorts of initiatives where the county may play a catalytic role. In delivering services that will lift up communities and do so in a way that employs people. And, you know, it contributes to the tax base. It does all sorts of good things. So. Roger, thank you for your hard work on this. And I think, you know, we're going to have some conversations internally and. And, and see if we can bring this forward potentially as early as, as next month's meeting. So, so thank you for that.
Great recognition, Commissioner Thomas, who's chairing the committee.
Yeah, Commissioner Thomas, of course, was unable to be with us today, but she has been working at least equally as hard, maybe harder. And we're, we're deeply grateful for her, for her leadership. So, so thank you. Are there other working groups represented today who have a report to offer? Hearing on, let me just. Give you a preview of coming attractions. Next month's meeting, we, we will have testimony around a topic. That became the subject of working group that has not yet advanced. And it has to do with, and this has been a subject of very. Interesting, sometimes provocative, public dialogue. And that is electric vehicles. We did have testimony on that last year. So I just wanted to plant the seed. That if it is an area that you might have an interest in, and I won't go beyond that because I don't want to steal the speaker's thunder. But there will be thunder and there will be a speaker. So if any of you have an interest, I, I encourage you to kind of. Think about the ways in which you might be involved in a working group around that issue. And then one more preview. The following month. We will have a session as we had last December, which was widely applauded. And that is one without any witness. But where the commissioners had a very open exchange of ideas. And it was suggested we do this periodically. So next month will be electric vehicles redux. And the month after that. Like to see all of our commissioners present physically here. And with the expectation that we will have a, a very granular conversation on a number of the topics that we started with. And are now moving forward as well as some of the topics we started with that either are going to be dead in the water and we will so conclude. Or that may have renewed life and find ways to resurrect them. So that's kind of where we're at for the next, for the next couple of months. So I, I hear no further. Suggestion that another working group wishes to report. Madam Chair, it's back to you.
Thank you. And I do want to report back that there have been a lot of the different bureaus and offices and. County entities that have reached out. So I'll be working with Vice Chair Lane to figuring out how. They, they fit in. I know many times we've talked about the, the lamp being. A lot of our conversations, including, you know, Commissioner Cooley's conversation. The lamp could play a role. So we want to make sure that we are including and not working in silos. We want to make sure that they're a part of it. And just this week, the Justice Advisory Council. Heard about our conversation at the last meeting and wants to come and introduce themselves and some of the work that they're doing. So I'm excited about that. We're hoping that we can, you know, have them fit into some of our conversations going forward.
I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
So those were the only things on my end. I know that the. The next meeting, again, will, will be still considered partly. Hybrid. But after that, the main one is, is, is when the order is lifted. So we do expect all members, if possible, reach out to us. With ample time to ensure that for next month. We had a very difficult. Time today, getting the technology running in this room, just given again, the, 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 we didn't have techno, of your technology. Supporting us today. So we wanted to make sure that for those of you that are joining us virtually. To let us know well in advance. So if we do need to make accommodations, we could do those well in advance and don't have to. Obviously have you waiting in the, in the waiting room or, or not being able to participate in next month's meeting. But with that, with that said, I don't have any, any other business before on the commission. So I will entertain a most emotional by Commissioner Brutus. Can I get a second per adjournment? Second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying hi. I have it. Thank you. Have a good one.
Stay safe and be well, everybody.